Before we open the meeting, I'd like to ask Mr. Lowery to have a pledge and our chief to pray.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You bow with me. By the God, we thank you for this opportunity to gather, to do the city's business. Lord, we ask that it would be pleasing in your sight. We ask that you give us wisdom, grant us wisdom to make good decisions. Lord, we thank you for the positions that you've called each and every one of us to, Lord. We just want to glorify you in doing those positions, doing our jobs the best we can. We ask that you be with us today. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen. Thank you all for coming. We will call the meeting to order. And before we get to the consent agenda, I would, I'd like to read a proclamation. I think most of you by now have heard that our friend, Mr. Tenell, has had an accident, is in the hospital, and a lot of prayers going out for him and his family. And this time, I'd like to, if, there are a couple of representatives from BCC here today. Would you guys mind coming forward? I'll, and I'll, and I'll read the proclamation, and I'd like to, like to give it to you. Jason's always been very respectful and polite to us, even though we disagree on things at some time. But he's all been very good. So, "Whereas the citizens of Port St. Joe wish to convey their most sincere wishes to Jason Tenell for a speedy recovery, and whereas Jason Tenell and BCC contractors is a vital part to the upkeep of the city of Port St. Joe through their refuse and yard debris service. Now therefore be it resolved that Tuesday, August 18, 2020, be declared a day of prayer for a speedy recovery for Jason Tenell and a day of encouragement for his family." Gentlemen, if you'd pass this on and let the family know and everyone that the city of Port St. Joe is praying for.
We really appreciate it.
Thank you, fellas. Okay, under the first item of business, a consent agenda, which consists of minutes, regular meeting of August 4th, workshop of August 6th, and a workshop of August 11th. So if everyone's had a chance to look over those, and there are no additions or deletions, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So move.
And Commissioner Ashbrook made a motion there, second. I'll say, so, Mr. Lowery, any discussion on anything of regular meeting or the workshop?
All in favor, aye. I hold the same sign, motion passed, five and oh.
This city attorney?
Oh, yes, Mayor. Last meeting, I was directed to write a lease agreement or add them to our current waste contract, which I did. Unfortunately, we all know what happened, so that has not been executed yet. But I hope to get with the gentleman over here today after this meeting.
Okay.
All right. And that's all I have for the moment.
Okay. All right, we're under old business. Mr. Jim?
Yes, sir, Mayor. We're still working on a resolution, 2022, state emergency, which is still in place for the state of Florida and the city of Port St. Joe for 2019. At this point in time, we have passed the declaration to wear masks. We have not moved into the next step of the mask mandate. At this point in time, we're still seeing an increase in dollars in Gulf County and working closely with the health department to make sure we do everything that we can to reduce the spread. Where do you want to give us a bail in?
Well, I'm somewhat encouraged. I do see a few more masks being worn. I think our positivity rate is 15% to 20%, which is still not good. And we're working on that. The TDC is working with the local businesses to try to encourage them to sign the pledge to protect, which is a good problem that would show that they're interested in stopping spreads. So, you know, we still have a requirement in place that we hope people will follow. Anyone else have any comments on where we are?
Mostly positive, Mayor. I think, like you said, most businesses are enforcing it. There's a couple of stragglers out there that are just hard-handed, but you can't win them all.
Right, right. We hope that they'll come on board soon. All right, Jim, go ahead.
Yes, sir. Next item, Census 2020. Census has hired people that are on the ground. I saw them out in the community. Please take a few minutes if you not had the time to do. Be work with Census to go online or call. They are coming door to door, so if you don't take anybody back in minutes, just make sure that we're accounted for and we bring as many as much tax dollars as we can to directly to the city of Port St. Joe.
Good.
On the new business, first item we have is a CDVG grant modification. This is what Mr. Boustard mentioned to you a couple of weeks ago about some of the funds that were left over to cover some of his costs. We should have Mr. Boustard on Zoom for his clarification and comments on this modification. Bruce, are you available?
He's not on.
All right. Jim, you should have a handout there that actually includes this modification. What this is, is to include some of his costs so we don't have to pay directly out of pocket. At this point, staff recommendation would be to move forward with this modification for the, to cover some of the costs for Mr. Bruce Boustard and the African region of playing the council.
So there's no cost to the city?
It will be a cost to the city. This will cover some of the, you know. You still have engineer fees, and you still have a portion of Mr. Boustard's salary to cover out of city. But it's a reduction. The idea was to try to see if we could get some of the money paid since we went to the rehab versus new construction, and they gave us some bit of the.
Staff recommends that we move forward and approve it.
There's a motion. Mr. Lowery made a motion to modify the grant agreement. There's a second. Second, Mr. Langston. Further discussion, anyone online which to comment? Anyone in the audience like to comment?
All in favor, aye. I hold the same sign, motion passed, five and oh.
The next item we have is in reference to a plant approval for High Tide 2 LLC. This actually came before the planning board first of the month with the favorable recommendation. If you turn over to page seven, you'll see the subdivision there. The subdivision is actually on Johnson Street Road with a total of 21 lots. We've already approved the plant for part of the subdivision that is on the, which would be classified as the west side. This is going to be on the east side on your left. If you turn on the Johnson Street Road, it's going to be 12 lots. Water will be provided by Lighthouse Utilities. The city will provide the sewer, and it is on the same side of the road. So we don't have, staff recommendation is to go ahead and approve the plant. So if it's in the city, it's going to be on the county road. Lighthouse Utilities and Water, city.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I might abstain from this, but just because I'm, I have a business relationship with the African fellow.
Okay, all right. All right, comments? Suggestions? Entertain a motion to approve the plant?
Motion to approve.
Okay, second. Any more discussion, discussion from the audience? Anybody, anybody online?
All in favor, aye. I hold the same sign, motion passed, four oh one, extension.
All right, moving on along.
Yes, sir. The next one we have is a development order request for Gateway Phase Two, Paces Foundation. Paces Foundation actually came before you about six months ago with a couple of ideas and suggestions that they would like to see going forward for Phase Two. It has gone before the planning board with the couple of DEOs exceptions. One would be, or condition should I say, the first being the parking ratio. Normally, your land grabber regulations require two parking spots per unit. This phase, they requested that it be reduced to 1.5. Planning board agreed to that. The next one would be to fix the current units that are in place from the damage from Hurricane Mike. We have representatives here to come and talk to you, but I believe 14 of the 16 have been repaired.
C O is yesterday.
That is correct. It has a pre-book yesterday, the last two were final expected. So all 15, so all 16 have been repaired. So all units are repaired and back online?
Correct.
The next item.
Bruce, you need a name?
They would kind of love to sign in before.
Just coming up, just for the record and indicating that, just. And state your name, so we get you, make your decision.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioners, Michael Bauer with Paces Foundation. And yes, Jim was correct. All 16 units have been repaired, final expected, as of yesterday, the last two. And I heard a comment from our management company that all 100% of the units.
The next item that the boards would like to have seen?
You may want to stay up here just a minute.
Yeah, I'm not going. I'm staying close.
Was a 25% reduction in impact fee, which statute would allow for when it's affordable house. So it's allowable in the statute, and the indication for the board was they would move forward on that. We didn't have CO was given on all units, all thirty.
That is, that is my recollection. If we voted on that, as well as the 1.5 farm spaces, I believe that's right, did we do that?
And it's all the units on there. The last one, it was a little bit of deviation from the initial request from the board with the interest on there. Presented to the board, I have a temporary interest on there versus the permanent interest with the board, relax, this is the time for the project actually. That's the one I don't know. Maybe some discussion on is how we went forward on the interest on there. Going back and looking at the planning board meeting, staff was looking at it and wondering if there was an issue with construction vehicles coming in, what about a fire truck at the end once the project's already done? What's the difference in a construction vehicle moving in now or making return the radius versus a fire truck, which is 30, 35? Sure, other than that, that was.
Thank you. So at the last planning meeting, it was requested that we could put the modified entrance, the double Ys, I called it, in the beginning of construction as opposed to the end. And the answer is absolutely yes. The concern is the median that's in the entrance. Entrance is designed through the civil engineers to handle garbage truck and emergency vehicles to that size. It's not designed to handle tractor trailer traffic. That community wouldn't have that necessarily. And so we're concerned about during construction that the island will be damaged or ripped out by a tractor trailer, the low boys. So what we propose, and that's the last colored map that you have, map.
34.
The last page, yes. And so that is a construction entrance, and construction entrance during, from the beginning of construction through the end, will be widening to match the final size in this developed and designed for the emergency traffic. But we were concerned about the island only, and concerned that we would put the island in rather than the beginning. With that, during construction, we would put in some barricades, design of some barricades, say, left and right only. And when a tractor trailer came in, whatever equipment, we would remove those signs.
So are you saying that when, when it's finalized, there will be no issue with a fire truck coming in?
That is correct. It's designed for that vehicle size.
But not an 18.
That's correct.
So, so it looks like here it's 14 feet is the width of each lane after completion with the island?
Yes. I've talked to, I've talked to the contractors, and they will put their dent grade and sub base in scratch code asphalt in the beginning to meet the size of the final design, just not the island, the dollar.
Right, right. Okay. Questions?
So the flow of traffic will already be changed. The only thing different would be just the island. So people had changed that flow and that it would not be a good way down broad.
Yes, we will put signage on the temporary sign, and I think I noted that in the drawing. On the entrance, it will have, it will have those. Entrance, that's it.
But the final product, I believe that's what we all discussed, like.
That is right.
That is correct, yeah. And with that being said, they would have to, that would all have to be complete before you find CO.
Absolutely.
And so, looks fine to me.
Thanks, Bruce.
Yeah.
All right, we'll make your motions.
Okay, all right. And motion by Commissioner Ashbrook to approve the development order request for Gateway Phase Two. There's a second.
Second discussion.
Second discussion, Commissioner Langston.
I just have a question. I just want to know the three acres that you don't have left over after the project.
At the moment, it's a plan holding. I don't have any development plans yet. We have been approached a while, probably over a year. But some other nonprofit area, possibly a single-family housing, we would certainly be happy to entertain discussions with that organization.
What about going in and back to the city?
Let's get through this, and we're happy to have any conversations.
Actually, now, if I don't have a conversation.
Fully approved, you know.
I mean, we don't appreciate.
Maybe we can get together sometime and talk about it, discuss it, but I'll let discuss it for the project. Don't, it, it, it may not affect the way that we vote, but I just want to get some information and see what you got to say about it, so.
Sure. Well, I think, you see, until this point, we worked to, in good partnership with the city, to try to get this through and see the recommendations that were brought forward we were having to move. So we're open to have discussions at any judgment, but I'd really like to get this done first, and then, so I'll commit to handle the questions.
I do believe we donated that property to them.
Yeah.
Okay, just want to make sure that, if I understand this.
Yeah, there may even be a deep restriction for a quarter of hours.
From the original, yeah, let's, let's get together, Commissioner Langston, if you want to get together a little and see, see what we work out.
I'm happy to have any conversation.
Yes, sir, I appreciate it. Okay, about the second stand, or the second stand? Second stand, okay, again?
There was a motion to include the fourth commission.
Yeah, it's all inclusive.
Yes, sir. I assume that. All right, any further discussion, anyone online, like to discuss? Anyone in the audience, questions, discussion? Everybody understand what we're voting on? All in favor, aye. I hold the same sign, motion passed, five and oh. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Moving on, the next item is HESI Transition Settlement Agreement. Probably somebody may wonder what this is. This is the last phase of the BP settlement. This was part of the funding that came down from the federal government. We have one last check, and it's like our final check, in a matter of about $20,000. We've had law firms work on this for a number of years, and found this quite a bit of money. And I believe it's probably your last one. The sale has been heading itself towards for the last couple of years. And before your date, on page 35, is a final settlement agreement, and it does not include attorney's fees in the final check. Your approval will move forward with the sale of the settlement's case.
That amount of money, right? Okay, I assume this, this will be deposited in the BP fund bank account, that's where it came from, BP hospital. Okay, all right. Is there a motion to authorize me to sign this and get $20,000? Commissioner Langston, make a motion there, second.
Next.
Second. Commissioner Ashbrook, okay, any discussion, any questions, anyone? All in favor, aye. I hold the same sign, motion passed, five and oh. And I will sign it. And Jim, you have an original or anything you want me to, you want to use this for signature or what? Well, I'll give you that.
I'll give you.
That's fine. Okay, all right.
Yes, sir. Last time I had is reference to the state revolving fund amendment. This is on the reference to the water side. We have applied to the wastewater side for funding for Long Avenue. We still have funds available from the water side. Through the years, the city has worked through replacing the water lines throughout town, and this is money left over. What this would do is it's going to allocate the money towards Long Avenue, and it's also going to be able to put the loan in a better favor for the city, reduce the rate, potentially to a higher grand amount there. So with that amount, what this would be doing is moving it towards Long Avenue projects. Staff recommendation is to start allocating that money that was left over to go towards a Long Avenue project and hopefully with your funds, wastewater side is approved by the.
Anyone? Commissioner Lowery, make a motion to approve the amendment, somebody? Okay, there's a second.
Seven.
Second, Commissioner Langston. Moving forward, we don't get Long Avenue done, we're out of here. So I. Discuss, anyone? All in favor, aye. I hold the same sign, five and oh. That's real good, Jim, thanks. It's been a complicated situation. All right, anything else? Jim? Yes, sir. None is a good. Okay, public works, Mr. Grantland, that's in the back here. Good, everybody good? Everybody well? Okay, very good. Okay, surface waters, Larry McCallum, online?
He's online.
Okay. Larry?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I've talked with the city manager, and it's not on the agenda, but I would like to ask the board's approval to bid out some of the chemicals we use at the water plant. And to be specific, ferrous sulfate, caustic soda, and sodium hypochlorite bleach. Now, if you remember, last year, through the bid process, we did drive down some of the cost of our chemicals. And I'd like to try to do that again if I could.
You know how I feel about 100% finally.
I don't know why they'd have to ask him to want to save his money.
But he does have to.
Well, I just wanted your approval. I need permission to advertise, that's it.
All right, there are motion to allow them to advertise our chemicals. Commissioner Ashbrook made the motion there, second. Second, by Commissioner Hoffman. Discussion, anything else, Larry? You need to add?
No, sir, that's, no, sir, that's it.
Okay, all in favor, aye. I hold the same sign, five and oh. Larry, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Anything else?
No, sir, that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Okay, wastewater, Kevin Pettis?
Yes, Mayor and Commissioners, something I forgot to add to the list. We went up for bid for the pipe work, and I got the bids back. I've got the low bidder at $12,000. I'd like to award the bid and get the pipe put in the pond. It was three bids in. So the lowest bid was the guys that have done the work in the past, so.
What you did, I don't, we don't have that in front of us. I'm not all in that.
We need to collect, we actually put these in down, so we need to get these out till Friday. That's why you don't have. You don't feel comfortable with increasing banks?
No, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with, you know, he may want to mention how many bidders we had and who was low and who was second anyway, so we'd know about it.
Tim, do you have in front of you the list, the actual bidders we had, the actual dollar amounts specifically on there, the RFP number? That way we can have that for the record.
Okay, so the low bid was United Rentals out of Panama City for $12,069.76. Same crew that did the other HTP workforce. The next was WTS. Their bid was $13,871. So they're $1,800, pretty close. And then we had Viking Diving, and Viking is out of Port St. Lucie at $28,000.
What was that?
And that is, it was RFP 2020-11 was the, was the bid, you know, the RFP number.
Okay, let's pledge to the board.
Motion to approve United Rentals bid, 12K and change.
Okay, there are motion, there are second. I'll say, second, Commissioner Lowery, that would be for RFP 2020-11, in the amount of $12,069.76. Any further discussion, questions for Kevin? All in favor, aye. I hold the same sign, motion passed, five and oh. Turn it loose, Kevin.
Okay, we'll, we'll get that in, in the works. We're still right at four foot on the ponds, and the pond's holding the water well. Evaporation, you know, we lose about a half when it's sunny. We lose about a half million every day. So we're just, you know, every day we get an eighth of an inch or quarter inch where we gain, and so if we can hold off and not discharge again for another month, every month we don't discharge, it's just money in our pocket. So if we don't get a lot of rain between now and the end of next month, then we'll have another month. So I won't discharge in September as well. So, but everything else, we're putting things together. The air conditioner should go in the lab, hopefully by the end of the week. So our new lab will be finished and we'll move in. That's a Godsend. And it's just slow moving, but we're moving ahead.
Do you have a full staff?
I do. Well, in the budget is one more set of hands, and, but for what we have now, then yes.
Okay, nobody's sick.
Well, I've got one guy out today and one out yesterday, but not with the virus.
Okay.
So it's not related to the virus stuff.
Very good, all right.
Comment?
Yeah, Commissioner Langston wants to.
I just want to ask about those that are supposed to be getting ready to take those tests. Are they on, on schedule?
Yes, Joe took his test today, and he just sent me a note back during the meeting. So he's passed. So Joe Harris got his first wastewater license, so he's licensed as a water C and a wastewater C, which is a good thing for us.
What about the other guy?
I don't have anybody else scheduled. Nobody's finished the bookworks. It's not, there's a qualification that you have to do before you can set for a test, and the bookwork hasn't been completed yet for anybody else.
Yes, that's what I, that's what I wanted, you know.
Yes.
It's getting completed, though.
Yeah, I understand.
Somebody.
Can you wait this commission length? I appreciate it, Kim.
You're welcome. Any other questions for me?
Okay, we'll move on to finance. Mr. Mike, you got anything else from earlier?
Pretty much covered it, unless anybody had any questions.
Questions, Mike. All right, so the next item will be Mr. City Engineer, Mr. Josh, you want to come up and give us an update? I think everybody got a handout on. I think everybody got a handout also from Josh on what, where we are on the project.
Good afternoon. Uh, we'll run down the list. Um, there are grants for first on the list. Um, the first one is far as part stormwater improvements. Um, we had a meeting a couple of weeks ago, met with the Water Management District and D D and discussed our last response, and they gave us some items to go case. The main item on that was the actual cost of the options, and they asked us to try to get some, some harder numbers on that, and obviously we aren't at a stage to bid. So I was actually able to get a contractor that we used quite often to come last week to look at the jobs, and we're actually in the process of updating those estimates with contractors assistance to submit back to the Water Management District and D D. I expect to have those complete and reviewed by the contractor next week, so we'll send that in. And then based on my interpretation of that meeting, they'll actually schedule another follow-up call, go back through the comments. Once that happens, they'll work on scheduling that next public hearing. The next one is a stormwater master plan. We're still working through getting the city master inventory for that. Um, and we're, we're beginning the cat work, actually putting that inventory into a plan where we'll have a current full map of the city's, um, stormwater system. Um, next one is the Port City Trail. That one is out for bid. Bids are due on the 24th. Um, so we'll see where we're at then. Once we're able to select a contractor, we'll have a few items to send in with the D D, and we should be able to get that awarded and done. Uh, C B G sewer improvements. Um, we're waiting on the agreement and the bond from the contractor. Um, we expect to get those by the end of the week. I've got eight twenty-one down to ten and two date. Once we get that, uh, we'll move forward with any pre-construction meeting and a notice to proceed, so we should have the documentation in hand by the end of the week to give them a notice to proceed and turn that job loose here soon. Garrison Avenue Phase Two, we had pre-construction meeting last week on the 12th. The project start date is the eighth of September. Uh, Long Avenue and First Street, um, I think we're still basically the same update. We're waiting. Jim, I don't know if you've got any confirmation on all this hearing. They have not. So other than that, the only other thing is there was a, a request for information on the E R P permit for the waterline crossing, the Long Avenue waterline crossing canal, and we responded to those and actually got that permitted in as well, so, um, it looked like we're just waiting on the August hearing with F R S, or S R F, I'm sorry. Um, let's see. Downtown sewer improvements, I think that's listed as commercial district water sewer grant application, and again, the church well started the camera work yesterday and should be complete with it by the end of the week, so we should be getting a report here from that pretty soon thereafter. Um, the only other item is the Frank Pay Park and gazebo and picnic. Um, we had a pre-construction meeting with the contractor yesterday, the start date for that, which is the demolition portion, scheduled to start on that set. I think that covers everything on the list.
I have a comment. There was one item that's not on the list that we did discuss with Josh, and that's the N R C S grant for the stormwater, and we met with Josh about managing that project. We do have seven and a half percent in that grant for engineering and oversight, so we've asked for a proposal from Newberry to help us manage that grant as well, and that is moving forward.
Question. Only other question I have was, I know you mentioned it last time, but on that Garrison Avenue project about fixing the pothole.
We met with the contractor, we talked to them about that as well, so I think they're working on it.
Yeah, I attended that meeting and specifically asked them, and they, they were comfortable of looking at that and fixing them, not just on a little patch, but.
And we did talk about methods and means on this portion as well to try to prevent that from happening.
So, you know, we covered the new section and, and the old, so I, I think everybody understands what we're more, we like on the new, they just got to come back to price on fixing.
Mayor, I had a question on the Frank Pay gazebo. Uh, I had heard that there was, uh, discussion about go ahead and putting the roof on at the time of the initial build to save some on the cost, and I think the figure was like $60,000 to go ahead and put the roof on for the building to make it look like it used to. Is that something that needs to be voted on?
At this point, the only thing that's been approved was demo work for the annual piles. We had an alternate in there that was part of the initial bid process, and that was not approved. It's something the board wants to consider. Now's the time to start making that decision, because once they get on the ground, great for our own, but once these guys get on the ground, may not be able to get these guys back for, you know, a couple of years, a couple of similar work.
Yeah, the discussion in the, in the free con yesterday, of course, we did have a little bit of time nine, seven, starting, but it is a thirty-day, a thirty-day job right now for by, for final completion, but they did force us to, said if everything else that wanted to be done, the equipment that they had there would be taxed out for the next six months or something, demo and fire job, but.
What was their original, uh, bid estimate on replacing them for me? You called in with a two seventy-something, that distinction.
Exactly, you're thinking that somewhere in that range.
And now we've got budgeted in this year's budget already, uh, we haven't approved the final budget, but it is in here $300,000. So if we want to make a move to go ahead and demo it and build it back, now's the time to do it, based on what Josh is telling us, it'll, might be more down the line. I mean, it's definitely an icon for our city, and we're, we're getting a lot of calls and questions. I think Bree has said some of Facebook comments and questions, we're wondering if we're going to build it back, and we don't have to, but, but it is in the budget. If you guys want to go ahead and, uh, make a motion to do it and, and accept, I assume we can accept the low bid on four, which would be Daddy, who is going to do the demo work.
R J Corbin.
R J Corbin.
So they were low bid on the reconstruction side as well?
They were, they were the only, only bid. Much lower than the one before.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, it was.
I think, you, the thing to consider, you know, we'll still have to check with them, let them check availability of material, but as far as price goes, you know, we're already paying for mobilization as part of the demolition, so that's the cost savings that we have upfront. The other part is lumber deal fifteen percent last week, so, you know, the farther it goes off, the chances of the price ever being this low, you know, it's probably going to be tough either way, so that's just something to keep in mind.
I miss my head. The price is, is two seventy-five, there's, there's move forward with rebuilding, you know, with that price to make sure that it's going to stay under the three hundred.
We should have took it out of the budget if we weren't going to rebuild it.
Right.
The whole time we've been cutting things, that one has stayed solid, so I'm, I'm comfortable with doing what we need to do to have them online, tear it down and rebuild it.
I made a motion to, somebody rebuild, rebuild same company, R J Corbin, a little better. Okay. Commissioner Ashbrook made a motion, second.
Second.
Commissioner Hoffman, rebuild the, the old pier, we'll call it. Comments? Suggestions?
When's it going to be done? That's the question I keep asking.
Anybody online? No. Anybody in audience? And all in favor, aye. Aye. Same sign. Most of the past five, oh, that's great. Moving on. What's going to do?
That's all I got.
Any questions for Josh?
I have one question. Do you have like a ballpark figure of a timeframe that the master plan, the stormwater side of the master plan might be completed?
I don't at this point, but I have a meeting on that tomorrow with somebody stepping with that coming, and I'll bring that, or I'll bring it to Jim next week, get you guys.
More questions for Josh? Thank you, sir. Appreciate your report. All right, code enforcement. Mr. Jim, you want to take that?
Yes, sir, Mayor. Uh, we have went out for bid to clean up several properties around town, and we have some movement on this. Uh, one of which we need some help from the board on the bridge and rocks and property. This property is in the corner of Palm and Sixteenth, we're out to bid right now to have the property cleaned and removed and destroyed. We've got indications that there's potentially a contract that could be for the purchase of that property. What does that mean for us? Uh, with that contract, there are some lanes that are existing now and working with the city. How we want to do this, which we have lanes costing $30,000.
Will we just take them?
Absolutely.
What we have here, and it kind of startled me too, but getting back to an order that I actually issued in 2016, the city has a $40,000 lien on this lot. Um, we, they were just, by reputable company has a $28,000 offer to buy the lot. Unfortunately, and I didn't think there was a mortgage on it, but Tom came up with, there's a $23,000, and leaves about $5,000. We don't want to blow this deal up because it would cause a whole bunch of problems. These guys are going to come in, tear down the house, and it's going to fix all of our problems. Um, what we, what I am offering, what I think I'm recommending to the board to do is just cost, bare bones cost, we've had about $850 into it. That did not include what you paid the special magistrate, so I figured probably about another $650 or $1250. I am offering, I think I'm recommending to the board, don't want to blow up this deal, and, and given the fact that this $23,000 mortgage is in front of us, that we make an offer to go ahead and satisfy our lien, which is probably about $40,000 for the payment of $1,500. This house gets sold and they fix it up. That's my recommendation.
Well, it costs us $20,000 to tear it down if we move it off.
Well, then, what I was going to do, when I thought there was no mortgage, Tom, was go ahead and foreclose on our lien, and then we go ahead and sell all the court house steps, take our money, and we think, wow, here we go to the property. But I'm not seeing, and that wouldn't entail costs, I don't know about their filing fees and sales fees, everything, and it would take some time, but we wouldn't have to do that. This can be done relatively quickly, and we have a problem taking all of that and get a few dollars.
My, my only concern is if we decide to do it, that whoever buys the property has got to have a certain amount of time to demo that house and clean up that lot. I mean, I've been dealing with one family, and then we're going to start dealing with another family, so we have to start all over.
I said not a family, it's a company.
Oh, okay. Okay. So makes it more complicated, do them instead of them. So, so, but I, I, I'm, it sounds good to me, but I, I think we need to maybe put a timeframe for demo and cleanup.
Tom said that they were interested in doing that. Um, I guess the leverage that we have is we can just say, well, no, we've got to pay us all $40,000, this deal is off. Right? So we probably could get some assurances from the company that they will do it in, say, ninety days or something. Does that sound?
I like sixty a lot better. My question to you, Mr. Turney, is if we, if we go ahead and drop the lien on the house and say you can satisfy it for 1,500, that goes down in perpetuity. If that deal falls through, it reverses back to original owners, now that original owner can get out for 1,500.
Deal wouldn't fall through because the only way we're going to get 1,500 is if the deal closes.
But I wouldn't want to satisfy that. Well, I guess it wouldn't be until we got paid.
Well, once we got the $1,500, we would have to satisfy them. That deal would be going through. We wouldn't get the money unless the deal is gone.
Could we satisfy the lien and do our, our side of the deal after the house is cleaned up and, and the lot would be vacated?
That'd be getting real complicated, because you have parties that really don't have anything to do with each other. This, this company is buying the house from Mr. Robbins. We have some leverage because we have a lien. I guess we could try and interject ourselves in the contract that they have, so I don't know, we have to see. I don't, I don't really know the question to ask.
I, I just think it's a simple contract between us and the buyer that agrees that at closing, we would satisfy the lien for X amount of dollars, but that document wouldn't change anything unless it went to closing.
Yeah, at closing.
Yeah, it would happen at closing, so we know for a fact that it transferred ownership.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, that's, that's where it all would happen anyway. That's where we would.
You're comfortable with that.
Yes.
Then I'm happy, yeah.
So, so motion, but, but with the length of time cleaning down, I've heard sixty days, I, I don't know what everybody else is.
Is that reasonable with subcontractors so hard to come across, and can we get a house tore down in sixty days?
And what, and what happens if they go through? I mean, we're going to be right back into where we, now we have a lawsuit against them for breach of contract, or that we're right back in front of the.
We're going to have daily fines. That's a number of dollars a day.
But we've got $40,000 in liens on that.
Yes. We're second. $1,500 in actual, all.
Everybody feels comfortable with it. I mean, that's.
I think Chuck, great news. We're going to get this place cleaned up.
Get it down as quick as possible and cheap as possible to us, I guess, so. I mean, we'd have tipping fees and all that.
Yeah.
And touch, I mean, not twenty, but yeah, tear it down, so.
Well, I was going to, I would just foreclose on the lien and sell it up for my steps. Whoever bought it would be in a problem.
But that's, that's months and months from now. Yeah, right.
There's the whole, I would have to file the complaint. We'd have to go to court, we'd have to pick a lot. This could be something that gets done relatively quickly.
All right, I'll make a motion. This will be, I guess, a little complicated. I'll make a motion to satisfy the lien for $1,500 contingent on the property closing, and we'll have like sixty days to get the property cleaned up after closing. That's what we'll do for them.
Okay.
That's my motion.
Okay. There's second.
I'm good with, I'll say.
Okay. Question. So, once again, if they, if they don't get it cleaned up in sixty days, where are we going to be?
There's a.
Not a violation, it'd be another court filing.
We'll start that process.
Starting that process.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion? I got one thing, but you feel pretty comfortable that you, I mean, you'll feel comfortable as you speak with Tom, I'm assuming?
Yeah, I mean, I know who the people are, okay. I don't know if I, you don't have to, you don't have to, I, I just, they're reputable people, we all in here, all.
All right. All right. Discussion. In my own line, Mr. Bree? In the audience? All in favor, aye. Aye. Same sign, most of the past five, oh, we'll, let me get another eyesore going down. All righty, code enforcement, anything else there? Jim, you got anything else in the code? All right, Police Department, uh, Chief Matt, you wouldn't mind coming up, and, and Lieutenant Richards, come up if you will, please.
Like to say that, uh, that Matt's done a wonderful job for us, and we appreciate it. He's moving on to down the street, and that's okay, we'll still know where he is if, if we need him, but at the same time, I'd like to introduce our new police chief, Mr. Jake Richards, and, uh, we're looking forward to working with him, and hope everybody will get behind him and support him, and we all know, we all make mistakes, and he'll probably make some too, but that's part of the learning process, so, uh, so we'll, uh, we'll move on from there. We, we congratulate you on, on that position, and, uh, that time, uh, this time I'll turn it over to other commissioners, like make comments, and I'll let you make any comments you like to make.
I like to say that he does make mistakes, because when I was in the, uh, working department for Fish and Wildlife, I, I had business with.
I like to say that he does make mistakes because when I was in the working department for Fish and Wildlife, I, I had business with him. But I'm going to let that go and I think he'll make a great chief. And I think he's learned all his lessons from those mistakes. Congratulations.
I just want to say that, you know, um, been there for a long time, deserving, worked hard. We all make mistakes, learn a lot of mistakes, that was, that was makes me better, better man, better father, you know, better son. And I just want to say congratulations.
Jake, I know you pretty much on my life. Let's go together and certainly proud for you. And one thing about Jake, you don't want to prove boy, he'll, I mean, don't ask him. He'll flat give it to you. But again, congratulations, grateful.
It's like congratulate you. It's been great working with you thus far and I can't wait to have you retire out as chief.
Matt, you will make any comments and then, uh, there's those is Jake.
Yes, sir, I, I appreciate the opportunity of you and me. The last five and a half years have been good. I appreciate it. I know Jake's been doing great.
Thank you very much, Jake. But I, I gratefully and humbly set the position and it's, it's crazy to me that a little poor outlaw boy from out of view that used to illegally hunt deer and stuff.
Shh.
Hey, I got, I got in trouble and I cleared that up when I was a child. So it's not all right. But that, when you, when you make up your mind to change, then you can change and then you can, you know, go somewhere. And hopefully, uh, keep doing the great things that we're doing and just keep everything on track. I mean, as Mr. Jim says, the least department is one thing that most of you guys and you don't worry about. I want to do it that way. You don't have to worry about what we're doing and if we're messing up. I just want to keep everything that way. And keep everything on the right path. It's a tough, it's a tough time right now. So hopefully we don't see the things here that a lot of bigger places. I think we have.
Thank you, Jake.
Been working with, yes, sir.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Ms. Pierce?
I don't have anything, sir, I'm just some question.
All right. Anybody?
Yes, yes.
I do have one thing.
I do have one thing.
It's Ballister.
Okay. Bruce Ballister?
Yes, sir. So I am very sorry, I was trying to get into the workshop meeting. Didn't realize I had the wrong sheet up. Um, and I know that they go long, budget hearings go long, so I thought maybe it was going long. I do apologize, the, the workshop or the, excuse the public hearing for the modification is a necessary step to move forward with C D B G. And if you will consider that, uh, this session, I'd appreciate it.
We, we've already moved past that, Bruce, and the motion passed for the amendment.
Okay, well, that's good to hear then. Do know that the way that the C D B G manager set the budget up, he took money out of the engineer's fee. And I'm going to work with him to put those back.
Very good.
They're likely to be fully paid.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Charlotte, a while back, I think we discussed the Halloween Ghost on the Coast and Christmas on the Coast.
Yes.
Was that before the COVID emergency declaration or after?
I think it was after, but we're looking at this October thirty-first and the second Saturday in December.
Yeah, we may have to revisit those as time goes on. Hopefully things, you know, quiet down a little bit, but maybe especially the October situation. I just want to clear that up. Have approved my new.
Yes, sir.
But the, a lot of folks together, we can wear masks, maybe. Of course, Halloween's no problem, everybody wear a mask. All right, any questions, Ms. Charlotte? All right, citizens to be heard. Anybody in the audience like to speak to the board today? Anyone, anybody online? Okay, discussion items by commissioners who started first last time, I believe we started over here. Commissioner Hoffman.
I don't have anything today, thank you.
Mr. Langston, I don't have anything. Okay, Ms. Lowry, I'm good.
I'm going to break the trend. I just wanted to say I really enjoyed this project sheet. This was very helpful and this is something that I want to keep posted on my wall. So whenever there's an update and someone calls me about when's this going to happen, this is very helpful.
Very helpful, I appreciate Josh doing that. Sure is. And if we get one completed, you can check it off that list.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay. Only thing I have is, is folks, remember Jason in your prayers. It's the day we declared it, a day of prayer in the city for Jason ToNNell. So ask your neighbors and everybody, and of course prayer really does help. And he, he's going to need, need a lot of help. So that's, that's all I have and nothing else, we'll stand again.